Reverend Kidwell here. If not, Nathan, would you lead us in a prayer before we open the meeting?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Pat with me. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this evening. We pray your blessings upon this town. I pray that you move in each person's life, that you give us wisdom and discernment to act on behalf of those that have put into this position. I pray that we honor them, that we honor you, that we are kind and loving and thoughtful of others. And I just pray for you to guide us and be with us and be with this council, be with this town, and that all those that go out and serve you, that we represent you well. Thank you, Jesus. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to officially open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I hope you lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First section of the meeting, our public hearings. Tom, you want to introduce the first request?
I'd like to say something real quick. We had a request to rezone a property on Lions Club Road at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. They opened the public hearing and heard some information, but ultimately they did not send forward a recommendation. They continued the discussion until the next meeting. They're asking that you postpone your consideration so we don't have to re-advertise it.
And then, so Tom, because the next meeting is July 7th, they won't go back until the second week in July, so we're talking about the second meeting in July for postponement.
Yeah.
What's that date?
I didn't bring anything.
Doesn't matter what we say, Nathan will tell us we're wrong anyway.
It's the second council meeting, July 21st.
Any questions by council? If not, is there a motion to postpone the public hearing?
Chairman will make a motion to postpone.
Grevin will second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious, Tom, can you tell us what some of the issues were that they wanted to postpone for?
I guess, number one, we wanted to give the applicant some time to discuss which zoning district, if you'd be comfortable with a different zoning district than was originally requested, and some time to look into some legal issues with the access to Lions Club Road.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Before we vote on that, is there anyone, since this was published, is there anyone that physically came here tonight to talk about this particular subject?
And if I can weigh in, I specifically spoke with three individuals who had came and spoken in Planning and Zoning, who came and talked to me afterwards, and I said, "It's being postponed." They said, "Okay, so I don't need to be there at the next meeting?" I go, "No, it'll probably be on to be postponed." They said, "Okay, so it'll be after the next Plan and Zoning meeting." I go, "That's my understanding of it." So there was individuals who were interested in speaking to it, but they specifically asked me about that.
Okay. We're good. All in favor of postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Tom? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out. Officially open the public hearing and consider an ordinance to approve the vacation of a portion of 11th Street.
All right, yes. We have a request from Phelps Health, the county hospital, so it was a request to vacate a portion of 11th Street. And you notice it says generally west of Powell Avenue. The request begins, I've kind of got it highlighted on this, on the area map, the area in red. Notice on the map, it says Asher Street here. That's not really a public street, that's actually a private, more like a private drive that the hospital built. I'll talk a little bit more about the history of Asher Street, but, so that's why I did not say west of Asher Street, because it's not really recognized as a street. But in the ordinance, it'll have a description of this area, more specific than just somewhere west of Powell Street. So we have here, I've shown, the hospital through the years has requested several vacations of streets in their, as they purchased properties to redevelop and whatnot. So that's what we see highlighted in the yellow, several streets, so this Asher's, this portion of 11th Street is in the middle of all that. This one, okay, so Asher Street currently is right over here. Originally, Asher Street was over here. So originally 11th Street went over, and then the street came down, and this here was Asher Street. Then when the hospital was expanded, they vacated that and moved Asher Street over here. And then a few years ago, that was in turn vacated, and so that's why Asher Street's over here now. And then, in addition to all these vacations that happened, there's been a lot of redevelopment with all the parking lots and whatnot. So this, now there's a kind of a grid of these private streets that the hospital's built to provide access to the properties, and that's the area you see here in purple. So it's a little complicated, but I just want to give you a bit of background on what's happened in this area.
Tom, is this the last street in that area to be vacated?
I wouldn't say that. We have this area here of Dwayne Avenue coming around here, so this property is still not owned by the hospital. If that changes, I imagine that'll be coming in. And I think they're, off the screen, there's some more type areas off the screen, so no, as time goes on, there'll be more.
So the purple are, is what?
Purple is areas that are private, private streets, basically. It's, I mean, it looks like a street, if you were driving down there, you wouldn't know that, but it's owned by the hospital.
They've already been vacated.
No, those are areas that were never streets. There's just something that the hospital built.
So what you have on here is Asher Street?
Yes.
I don't want to just say physical, but in the city's eyes, is that a street?
This thing, this thing down here, no, it is not.
There's buildings that face whatever that is, and I'm assuming those mailboxes are tied to quote-unquote Asher Street.
No, I wouldn't say that.
The mailboxes on those are facing the address.
Yeah, these properties are facing north and south, this one here. This one was recently just bought by the hospital, that's why they've been able to vacate this street here.
So we don't have any people that are going to be upset because of address changes?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I should back up and say that, so the applicant on this was Phelps Health, the hospital. So the reason why they're asking for this, you may have heard that they're doing an expansion or a remodel for the emergency room. In essence, they're planning on relocating the entrance to the emergency room, at least for like ambulance traffic. And so this 11th Street will basically be the entry for ambulances and whatnot to get into their new entry they're planning, and it's also needed for, provide rear service to the hospital building. The street itself, for the time being, will remain as it is, because there are a lot of utilities in that area. So this, the proposal would be if this is vacated as a public street, and utilities will be retained for all these utilities. So they still won't be able to build over this until, unless the, all the utilities are relocated. So this is a street view looking toward the west of the street, and as I said, there's a lot of, you can see the overhead utilities at least, and there's also some underground utilities, as evidenced by the, you see the fire hydrant on there. This is a survey showing the area. We always get a survey for an exhibit for these vacations to show exactly what it is that we're doing. So just to summarize, there are utilities located in the area to be vacated, easement will be retained. I never did fix it, sorry. The street is no longer needed for access to properties that are not owned by the applicant. As I said, they purchased, recently purchased that last house that had some access. So everything on both sides of this is owned by the hospital, and we didn't receive any objections from any utility providers, but mostly because it'll be replaced by an easement, so their rights don't change. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the vote of four to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom?
For a little education for us ignorant people, what's the difference between an easement and a right-of-way?
Yeah, so the right-of-way is physically owned by the city. So when somebody plats a piece of property, it shows these streets, and a part of that is a dedication, and it's giving that property to the city for public ownership and maintenance and all that. And when we vacate that, what that is, is giving up that ownership, basically. So it goes to, half of it generally goes to either side of where that came from. And so in this case, since the hospital owns on both sides, they would get all of it. If different people owned on either side, they would each get half. And then, an easement is, you own the property, but an easement gives somebody else certain rights to use your property. So in this case, we're talking about utility easements. So utility easement allows for the utility to have utilities on your property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? If not, is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this proposed vacation that would like to speak for? Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this proposed vacation that would like to speak against? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of the proposed vacation that would like to speak for? And finally, is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of the proposed vacation that would like to speak against? If not, any questions by council? Can we have the first reading?
An ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of 11th Street, generally located west of Powell Avenue.
Jackson, make a motion.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Rollups?
Yes.
Penner? Oh, he's not here. Barrett?
Yes.
Chervin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Levin, I see.
Acknowledgements or special presentations, we have two tonight. The first one is the award of a blue city, blue city recognition. John?
Yeah, I'm happy to report, the city received notice a couple of weeks ago that we were one of the designated...
Time out, time out. I didn't officially close the public hearing, did I?
I wrote it down for when you started reading.
Okay, and it was only a first reading?
That's what I...
So scratch all that. Had a long day today. Scratch all that. Stop at the first. Let the record, let the record show that the mayor had a rough day. Thank you. Blue shield presentation.
Yeah, so the city caught wind, I'm going to say maybe February, about the governor's executive order that was encouraging local governments to sort of apply for this designation. It really shows a community's support, not just through the adoption of its regulations and policies, but literally funding support. And as we reviewed that with the mayor and with the chief a couple of months ago, we just could go right down the order and see that we had been doing this and that and all of that, sort of in preparation, even of our accreditation that we got through the Missouri Police Chiefs Association a couple of years ago, required us to update all of our regulations and policies to best practices. And so we made application, brought it to council in May, made application by the June 1 deadline, and pretty quickly they turned it around and gave us that designation. So we're just really thrilled. I think it's a great testimony to not only the quality of our police department, the police chief and his leadership, but the community's support and the council's support as well. So with that, we have a plaque that actually chief and his staff had arranged, but we'd like to ask the mayor to make this form of presentation to, yeah, to the police department.
Would you talk a little bit about the accreditation status? Because I think that's a big thing.
Okay. Yeah, I was reminded about this a couple of months ago, this program, and I got ahold of Captain Nakaneishi, and he is the one who kind of spearheaded this with the help of Captain James and Captain Dillon. They worked very hard making sure that all the boxes were checked. We had to do a little bit of updating to a few policies, but with all the work they did, we got this. One of the things that made it easy is the fact that we are an accredited agency, that is through the Missouri Police Chiefs. And what they do is they come into your police department, they review all of your policies and procedures. I think Captain Dillon has to rewrite policies at least two or three times a week, every time there's a change in what the nation's doing, we have to adapt it with our policies. So we're getting ready to come up, we have one more year, and we're going to be re-accredited. They have to do that every three years. But the way to do that, it's pretty much a full-time job for Captain Dillon. He has to, we went from having, I don't know, how many?
Forty-eight policies, maybe?
To, we have about 200 now. So, and what he has to do is he has to get proofs for every year to show that we are following those policies. So it's a full-time job, it keeps him pretty occupied. But we're going right along with it. Hopefully, we won't have any problem getting re-accredited this year, so.
And Chief, would you say with this award, is there maybe 30 or so? It seemed like there was about 15 that made the first announcement eight weeks ago, and...
I haven't heard of anybody else besides us that has received it since then, so. And we'd have got it in the first thing, but I had no idea about it. Much time as I spent in Jeff City, they think I knew about it, but one of the councilmen here reminded me about it, and we got right on it, so.
Nice job, Chief, and entire staff.
Good job, Chief.
Our next presentation is Lauren Hill from the Small Business Association Administration. Lauren? Okay, we'll put them on next week's schedule, next meeting's schedule. Under Old Business, we have one, which is an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Meyer Electric.
So at the last meeting, council ordered to bid a little better of Meyer Electric for Project 517, which is Pine Street Lighting. Again, this project was, will be funded by funds set aside by the TDD Board. It did come in a lower budget, but we do have funds set aside for this, and I think you'd asked last time, there's one project left in the Pine Street, you know, funding basket from TDD Board, which was part of the agreement you guys already approved for wayfinding signage in downtown areas. So we'll have one more project coming forward on the Pine Street, and that'll finish up all the TDD funds on that project. So staff is requesting final reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract with Meyer Electric for $179,826.
Any questions for Darren? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Ralla, Missouri, and Meyer Electric Company, Inc. Move to approve.
Chairman will second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Bulge?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Chervin?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Rollups?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Rollups?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Chervin?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Rollups?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Rollups?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hawn?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Rollups?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Duncan?
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 Yes.
We've got 180 or so full-time employees. We also provide services for a couple of library employees, a couple of the, all the dispatchers, which are now fallen to Phelps County Emergency Services Board, and even Ralla Rural Fire Department. Those are all agreements that we have where we act as a fiscal agent on their behalf for purposes of employment, benefits, payroll, health insurance, et cetera. So we've been self-insured since at least 1992, and I think it goes back well before that. And the city has selected a broker, and from time to time, we explore whether or not there are other TPA, and that stands for third-party administrators, who basically are just taking those claims in under our plan and then paying out the variety of healthcare providers that are out there. There's a element of that, prescription benefit managers. That's a sort of a secondary part, but it works in tandem with the TPA or the health insurance plan. So we've been with UMR. It's a wholly owned, and their wholly owned prescription benefit management plan, OptumRx, for a few years, and employees have been really frustrated with them in particular, UMR. And again, they're just processing these claims. That started off with a company we knew years ago called Westport. They were acquired by Meritain. Meritain's not been acquired by UMR. This is a massive TPA firm. Ralla is very small, small fish in their very big pond, and we're just not getting very good customized services. So when we selected a new broker last year, we made it very clear that the city was interested in going out to the market to see what other kind of TPA providers are out there. We had seven proposals received. Four were on the prescription benefits plan, and three were on the healthcare TPA side. And after interviewing all of those with our consultants, we would like to recommend that we begin to migrate, probably October 1 is the date we're targeting, to move from UMR, which is our, again, our TPA, to Consociat and Ventegra. And there's a little bit of information in your package, just from oldest acres, Arnie, our broker, as to what Consociat is. Consociat is a relatively new TPA at Phelps Health, but they've been a BJC TPA for a number of years and doing a very good job predominantly in the metro St. Louis area. We're really excited about this prospect. I think, I know that the hospital is very excited about this prospect of Consociat. Currently, under our existing health plan, 75% of the healthcare dollars is spent through a Phelps Health provider already. So this idea of taking advantage of a direct-to-employer program that Phelps Health is promoting, it allows us to have a lesser deductible. If you're in network, in this tier-one network, a lesser coinsurance. It then offers an Aetna, tier-two, and then, of course, employees could still elect to go outside of that network and go out of plan, and you pay the highest code or insurance and deductible under that plan. But we feel very good about Consociat and very good about a very interesting prescription benefit manager that we interviewed as well, Ventegra. Very unusual, they're a nonprofit organization. They just, it becomes very complicated when you're buying your prescriptions. There are rebates given to the doctors. Those rebates can find their way back to the health insurance carrier, and this nonprofit took all of that sort of silly business that is all off. We don't see any of those numbers, but just takes all of that off the table, and they're just paid a flat fee for the processing of prescription services. So we really like this partnership. We took it to the Administrative Advisory Council, which is a small group of employee reps, and they were so excited to be migrating away from UMR. They didn't really, weren't too concerned with where we were going, and we said, no, you gotta really understand where we're going to. And we heard a presentation on them, and I think they were really excited to have that migration as well. So there's a lot of process that's still got to be done with information exchange from UMR to Consociat. So it's going to take us a number of weeks to get some of that paperwork finalized, but at this point, we want to just secure an award of that so that we can put everybody on notice, and that's the direction that we're going to go with the health plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Stephanie is really our primary liaison with the healthcare providers, so if there's any questions, she could certainly jump in there as well.
I got a question on Ventegra. Everybody's brother wants her hand in a healthcare dollar. So how does a nonprofit play in the game?
They formed a nonprofit specifically.
Who's they?
The organization, the folks behind Ventegra. And I'd have to provide some of the background information on who they are, what the makeup of it is, but it's not a for-profit entity. But we do have the incorporation, the documentation, the records that go along with it. So they created really to sort of take the game out of it. They're just not interested in sort of maximizing their returns in the various pharmaceutical sales firms' pockets. And so we've got a really interesting concept with it, but it's worked out very well in many other markets that they work.
Do you see skeptics on my face?
I do, but I'd have to bring you a lot more information on the firm itself. Although I can give you a quick, easy answer, other than if you look on page 5B5, it's kind of the pros and cons of the four prescription benefit plans that we looked at. So they do acquisition cost index versus average wholesale pricing. They have the cheapest drugs regardless of the rebate amount, and they have the most detailed reporting package that we could find. The only con we could find, and this is even talking with other people that are using their services, is in this case that they couldn't partner with Anthem. And Anthem would have been another big TPA provider out there.
So are we making two selections or one? In other words, if we, if we select, consentiate, does that mean we get Ventegra, or that's a separate decision?
It's, we're recommending both, but Consociat didn't bring Ventegra. Consociat is a TPA saying, we're interested in doing your third party. You can still use whoever you want on your PBMs. They have met, and they've now shared information, and they're very comfortable partnering with them as our PBM under this network. Still falls under the Consociat overall.
So we're not a big employer?
Yeah.
And again, so I'm, I'm coming back to this nonprofit. Why they want our business?
Because their niche is smaller entities. They're not going after the large fish either. The big fish are all going at the OptumRx's and the big plans that are out there. So they're, they're picking up kind of that customization of smaller plans that want a bit more hands-on data rather than referring to these big contracts that are out there. So their specialty is sort of our size organization.
So I'm an employee of the city of Ralla, full-time employee, and I want to get preferred drug pricing. Where can I get that? Is it mail order only? Is it Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, Sinks?
All of those. You can do them from all of those. So we have also a program in addition to OptumRx. We have.
So I'm going to get the most favorable?
ARX and Go.
I'm going to get the most favorable pricing regardless of what pharmacy I go to?
Yes. All of our pharmacies are in the Ventegra network of pharmacies, and we still would use ARX and Go, so that was the one, that's our mail order program. And we took ARX and Go, which we've really been happy with, and we partnered them with Ventegra, and Ventegra said, we're happy to honor and work with ARX and Go, which is mail order, large volume prescription.
And how did you quantify the benefit for Ventegra versus the others? Did you select a list of typical drugs that most people would take and say, these are examples across all the companies?
Yeah, so all, all the firms, both on the TPA side and on the prescription benefits, we gave them the, all of our performance from 2024.
The actuals.
All the actuals. And then they were actually able to match up and say, under our program, here's where that pricing would have been. And quite frankly, all of them, but Optum were saying, we're going to be able to save $100,000, $200,000 on our prescription side by getting away from kind of the games that Optum plays under the UMR network.
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
Yeah. On page, sorry, 5B6, under Consociat, under cons, it's noted that there's billing concerns with Phelps. I'm just curious what that might be.
Yeah, that was expressed from some employees who had had some claims, some large claims that just weren't getting claimed, processed very clearly through UMR with Phelps Health. We've had follow-up conversations with a team from Phelps Health, and those have all been resolved.
Okay.
So that was kind of going into the process. There was a reservation, but as we got through the interviews, got a chance to talk to the, sort of the reorganization of this TPA, we felt very comfortable with everything Phelps Health and their partnership with Consociat.
Okay, so just to be clear, this chart here, this table, sorry, in 5B6 was from early in the process, before the interviews?
Well, it was, it was kind of an issue that we raised early in the process, but it was addressed as we kind of got through the interviews and the chance to look at their proposals.
Okay, thank you.
And even the new program for Phelps, even though Consociat's already had relationships with BJC and St. Louis, it's a new relationship with Phelps Health. And quite frankly, I think it's not just BJC, Phelps Health, it's also Cox and WashU. So that all becomes kind of the favored tier, and then it brings in Aetna for a tier-two, and then an out-of-plan network, so.
Okay.
How long's this contract with them? Is it a year?
It's a year, but quite frankly, we've been just rolling these over year after year. It's so complicated to change these out. So it doesn't come back to city council very often when we make these changes.
If something were a disaster, it could come back?
We would go back out. If something wasn't working, we would go back out for proposals and bring that back to council then.
And what's the implication for the cost of the city change on this?
Well, we hope it's going to be savings. We believe it's going to be savings based on 2024, but if you look at everything in, so the city spends about $3.5 to $4 million a year on healthcare, and 2/3 of that is covered by the city and a third by employees. And that third by employees is covered by their deductible, premiums, and coinsurance.
Okay.
That's kind of the beauty of having a self-insured plan is that we really get to see every dollar that's spent, and we can then calculate, well, how does the city hold true to covering 67% of the cost and the employees 33%?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. VB8, or 5B8, on the, let's see, I'm sorry, hold on. Example of the Consociat plan design?
Yeah.
Is this saying it has no current T2 on the old one?
Correct, our existing plan.
Okay.
You're either, there's a, there's a 90%, an 80%, and a 60% on the existing plan. This basically is 180 and 60.
Okay.
Coincidence, of course not. So what they're also offering is that, under our current deductible, paying this year, that deductible would be half if you stay in that preferred network. So the deductible goes from 500 to 250. The coinsurance goes from 20%, yeah, 20% to zero in that preferred network plan.
The other thing you were discussing is the, you said you were happy with the billing issues, and I've dealt with Phelps numerous times with insurance issues, and it can be problematic.
And we're finding that that's really true for any of these big claims. And we think to a degree, the longer the insurance TPA can hold on to the dollars, because they're collecting the premiums, or actually we're collecting the premiums, passing them on, then it helps their bottom line. So they're not always all that anxious to sort of adjudicate these kinds of disputes. But we've now got some point people at Phelps Health that can help us kind of customize the follow-up on a lot of that service.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? John, if these are two unrelated companies, why would we not do a motion for each one?
We can.
Okay. Again, if they're not connected, I think that would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to authorize a city administrator to finalize services for the third-party administrator?
I'll make that motion.
Fair or second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to authorize a city administrator to finalize the agreement with the pension benefit company known as Ventegra?
I'll make it.
All to make the motion?
I'll make the second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item on the agenda is a motion to award and consider an ordinance to enter an agreement with Meyer Electric. Floyd?
So in late 2024, the city has awarded a Land Water and Conservation Fund grant specifically for improvements in Burwan Park. This first project in that endeavor is going to be Wilson Field Lighting. This is the main piece that we need to complete the field, which has been under construction since 2014. So we are proposing to install an energy-efficient LED system that will operate on Wilson Field. And this, this is again, going to be paid for by the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, which is a 50-50 proposal. So we are recommending the low bid by Meyer Electric. Questions?
Any questions for Floyd?
My main question, well, I was looking at this one and the next one, which are both for lighting projects, but as you said, the Wilson Field is a installment, whereas Qantas Field is a replacement.
Correct.
Is that the big cost difference?
Yes.
Okay. Because I saw a big price difference, but one is this, this is the first install on it?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's a 50-50, so it's bid at $289, basically. So our portion would be $144?
Roughly, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Any further questions for Floyd?
I had a little bit of a question just on the ball fields, and this may be a little bit of an unfair question, but it, we used to get tons of tournaments and such coming into Ralla, and it was very justified to put, you know, a good amount of money into the softball fields. I used to play more softball, so maybe I was just more a part of that, but I, I don't see that level of activity going on as we once did. Tournaments coming to town, a lot of hotel bookings and things like that. I don't see a lot of that going on anymore. Is that accurate? If so?
No, that's accurate, basically, so.
Why, and are we trying to do something to?
Yeah, UTRIP is really probably the primary tournament organizer now. We, they typically schedule about six to eight with us, but they don't have enough teams that make, so about half of them don't do, so we end up getting about one or two. USA, ASA softball is the other one. They're not doing quite as many tournaments either. We used to have them a lot. Softball numbers nationwide are steady, but they're not growing. So there's really not as much. Now, there are still tournaments going on most every weekend somewhere, that's true. But yeah, that's, it's just, it's just been a case of either we've had bad timing, so we like had six scheduled outside with a new group this year, and the very first two were rained out. So we are having a wetter time than usual. It's really hard to get those in this, this time of year.
Thank you.
Floyd, to Nathan's point, you talked about tournaments coming in. How's our league participation look?
Uh, steady. We have about the same number of teams, give or take, one or two that we've had for the last probably four years. So still, our locals are still playing pretty regularly.
So it's still getting used by?
When we can play. I mean, we're rained out again today.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You know, so.
We see a lot of fast pitch tournaments that came into town, and I just generally haven't seen much of that going on lately. And for the investment in, that we put into our fields, it's great to see. I remember at one point, like even to qualify, we were putting the nets up or the screens for shade. Like there was, I know you guys put a lot of money into that at one point to make those fields accessible for tournaments to come into town, and I don't know if there's much more we can do that's not being done, but I'd love to see that just for Ralla.
Well, one thing this will help us with Wilson and replacing the lights on Qantas. So as we've seen already with the light improvements with Bayless and Morgan and Kimmel, that's made a significant difference on the quality of play and what we're able to attract. So we finish Wilson, we'll have, we'll have five fields. Now, one thing that we are doing every year is we partner with Ralla High School. So they have enough teams come in that use more than just their facility, so we see other opportunities to do things with them on having additional inventory. So I think finishing out the fifth field will help us in that aspect, so.
Thank you.
And I would add, to go at the big tournaments, if you're not USSA and you're using the ASA or NSA, that's a really competitive organization, that you have to be really invest in that organization. And we've had in the past, ARX employees who have been leaders in that. But they're traveling all over. We were spending a lot of money to do that. So to be honest, sort of, we looked at the economics of it. It was costing us a lot of money to be at that level.
Okay.
It's not quite the same league as the, it's not the same, it's a very different organization and structure than USSA, which is a much more recreational. So the softball players tend to like the USSA, the tournaments like the NSA and ASA. It just became expensive, a lot of work to put those on.
I didn't know there's so much cost to make that occur.
Yeah.
Too.
Okay. So we'd really actually prefer to focus on more local tournaments. If we could find things where, you know, fundraisers and things here. We just weren't finding the economic benefit, to be honest, of what we, the amount we were investing in to be an ASA, NSA certified facility. And we can, we can provide some more background information on that as well.
The good news is we did get our benefit tournament in this weekend.
Good.
Even with the rain. Other questions?
There's no other question? Is there a motion to award the bid?
Chairman will make a motion to award the bid.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Ralla, Missouri and Meyer Electric for the replacement of Wilson Field Lighting.
Next item on the agenda is similar. A motion to award and consider an ordinance to enter an agreement with Ralla Light Sports Lighting.
So the March 14 tornado that came through really hammered our park system, and not surprisingly, winds have been the driving force between really the light improvements, the necessity of replacing those. So when you have poles that are, that were put in in 1967 and light fixtures in 1982, this is really the last field that has those old wooden poles. And so the wind from the tornado just pretty much snapped one off of the base, and so that put us in the quandary of having to replace that. Quite frankly, it's only a matter of time, because again, that's what happened to two of the other fields. So we're proposing again to replace the system here with a more energy-efficient LED system that will have all of the spillage and glare requirements nationally. Project set for completion toward the end of the fall, in October 30th, and we're recommending the low bid by Quay Light Sports Lighting. Questions on this one?
So Floyd, if I see this right, this is going to be paid for by insurance and Prop P?
Yes.
So no cost to the city?
Well, the, whatever, yeah, well, you could say Prop P will be a cost to the city, yes.
Because the light that was down, it's just one standard that was knocked over.
Right.
That's somewhere between $15,000, $20,000 on insurance claim on that one.
Just out of curiosity, how is it that a company from Michigan is the cheapest of the three bids compared to the Missouri bidders?
Well, that's a good question, because I ask myself the same thing. This is a relatively new company in this part of the country. They have been doing very active in the South, and they're trying to reach in the Midwest, so they came in very competitive on their pricing. And the thing, the thing that has been consistent with lighting systems throughout Missouri, not just Ralla, but we've had one dominant company that's pretty much had most of the market, and this, this group decided that they wanted to kind of get a footprint in here. So they were, quite frankly, they were very aggressive, not just in their bid, bid packet, but they were, out of the 23 companies that we ended up contacting, they actually contacted us multiple times. It's like, what do we need to do? They were constantly sending documents. So they were very aggressive from day one in the process. So I think that was probably, they, they're really just looking to try to get a foothold. And we talked, I talked to a couple of the other installations that they've done, either with universities or cities, and have given them high marks. So I think that really is the big difference here.
Thank you.
There's no more questions for Floyd? Is there a motion to award?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, first reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing.
Oh, we did that.
Yeah, did we vote to?
We vote, we vote first and then read.
Promotion to award.
One of them? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for that.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Ralla, Missouri and Quallight Sports Lighting, Inc., for the replacement of Qantas Field Lighting.
Nathan, I don't know why I'm in such a rush tonight.
I wouldn't have pod except for we just did the other one the other way.
For the, for the rest of the agenda, keep an eye on. Sorry about that, folks. Next item is a resolution to select an estimate for other park improvements.
Right, so this one also is related to the tornado. So if you've been out to Veterans Park for the Memorial Day ceremonies So if you've been out to Veterans Park for the Memorial Day ceremonies, for instance, or just driven past, the pavilions there just got hammered. Essentially, as you see the pictures in the packet, they pretty much got flattened. And so what we're proposing here is going with the same company that actually did the original design, which in this case provided the, the design, the layout plans, and the materials for actually doing the construction. So this is really kind of phase one, and the replacement of the two pavilions. And then phase two, we will come back to you after we do a competitive bid of contractors here in the area, they will actually put these together. But this is the same company that the South Central Regional Veterans Group utilized, and they really liked the design visually and aesthetically, it's very nice, so they wanted to use the same company. They have folks here if you need, you know, to get further information from them. But that's what we're recommending, is to go with this company to award a backyard showcase for the design plans and materials. Questions?
Floyd, did you mention the increase or design standard for the higher velocity winds?
Yes, so, thank you, for the reminder. So the initial building, the larger pavilion was rated for a wind tolerance of 90 miles an hour. And I would say the smaller one...
Sixty maybe?
Sixty or seventy.
Maybe?
We had nothing to do with that.
So the new ones will be rated 125. City code requires that we do 120, 121, I think, is what Brian said. So this is meets city code, but is also considerably higher than what we had originally.
So if you've been out there before, these are basically the newer pavilion all over again, only you're doing a smaller version for the old pavilion that we had as well.
Correct, right.
So, yeah.
And I would also say that because the extra design, there's extra cost, the insurance is covering that increase because it, it's the current construction standard for this area.
Yeah, that was my next question. Yep, thank you.
So the up cost will be covered by the insurance on this replacement.
All right, so then, my question is then, so insurance is covering the upgraded design and the materials. Is insurance paying for the assembly that's going to come later?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they have a say in, in the amount that is used for either the package or the installation?
That would be a Stephanie question.
In other words, if you get 10 bids and they, $100,000 from lowest to highest, does the insurance company have a say?
What the insurance jester did with me is he is, has a background in construction. He did a preliminary estimate on what he would build it or the company would build it as of today, if comparable to what we are proposing. As long as within a 10% variance, they'll go ahead and approve it.
Okay, so...
And they will only build to current standards, they will not go back and pay for what we had, because that's not current standard.
Okay, so this one, we get a free pass because we're getting to the standard?
Yes.
On the installation, you're going to get your bids in. Do you run them by the insurance company before you come to city council?
I've already given them an estimate of the overall package, because the difference between before was it was a lot, heavy volunteer, so we paid for materials, labor was mostly volunteer. They have put that inflationary factor in that, if we would have paid a contractor then on the sizes that they were, then they inflated that as of today. So unless it's a 10% variance of what he and I have done as an overall package, they, they don't want any part of the process.
Okay, you're not really giving the answer that I'm looking for. So we go out and we bid for somebody to assemble the package.
Yeah, let me, let me try and answer, because I think I know what you're asking. In this particular case, insurance isn't even requiring us to do bids. It literally is saying, you can go and, you can go and do your placement, and we're going to, we're going to honor it, so...
Up to a certain amount, plus 10%?
No, I mean, they're just saying, whatever, you've got a reasonable cost that you can demonstrate. In this case, we're going out to bid for the construction of that. We'll let them know what those bids are, but to this point, they're saying, we're not required to do that, and the expediency of the work is also one of the reasons that we're able to kind of move this along as well, so...
Okay, I'm good.
Other questions?
Just to overemphasize, because I thought that's what I said, and I, I think you've already answered this, this 208,000, this is just to get the design and the materials?
Correct.
You're saying phase two is then going to be getting the contractors, going to actually come and use those materials to do something with them?
Yeah, build it, right. And the roof.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know if you mentioned that in the write-up, but we're not doing the metal portion of their package, because we want to be, we want to control the delivery of the metal and not get into the issue if there's damage in root. So we're going to bid the, the roof out, the metal on the roof separately as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd.
Any further questions? If not, can we read the resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement...
Don't we look?
Point of order.
We don't need an award on this one, the resolution.
Okay, sorry, then. Hey. The last two you're like that wasn't sure.
Don't let that request get to your head. Go ahead.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ralla, Missouri and Backyard Showcase for design plans and materials to replace two pavilions at Veterans Memorial Park.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd.
Thank you. Last item under Claims and Fiscal Transaction is a mo, a motion to award a bid and consider an ordinance for Pierce Asphalt.
So staff open bids for Phase Three asphalt for $24,005. Low bid was Pierce Asphalt at $194,495.50. If you look up under the budget appropriation, you'll see we, we still have some budget left in asphalt for this year, so we'll have a Phase Four coming back to council here in next month or so. So staff is requesting a motion to award the bid to Pierce Asphalt, and the first ring of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to end the contract with Pierce for $194,495.50. Is there any questions?
So you said there's enough money left over to do a Phase Four, even though this is more than what Phase Three had budgeted.
Right.
I guess it's from Phases One and Two that there was ample money left over from it?
Right, so Phase One and Two combined was just a little over a million. We got 1.5 in the budget.
Okay.
So if you had the 100, you know, the 194,000 to, we still got a little money left.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Aaron, the price of oil, which is important in asphalt, are these bids fixed regardless of the price of oil during the contract term?
No. So we index, I mean, every city that bids asphalt, now you have to index the asphalt. So the price is fixed the day that, that you bid, then there's, you know, either an inflationary or a deflationary factor based on published price of, of the asphalt when you lay the asphalt.
Okay.
I mean, we're not talking huge dollars, but it can, you know, change the price, you know, $3 to $10 a ton up or down.
Okay.
I'm sure Steve's an expert if he...
It's been flat for about two years.
It's been pretty flat, yes.
If there's no other question, is there a motion to award?
I'll make that motion.
McNevan will second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the City of Ralla, Missouri and Pierce Asphalt LLC.
Thank you. Citizen communication, is there any citizen that would like to speak to the city council? If you would, please give your name and address to the clerk for the public record. And generally, we like...
Marcia Wayman, 312 Tracy Dawn Drive. Marcia, W A M A N. 312 Tracy Dawn Drive.
Generally like to keep comments, three minutes.
Perfect, I can do that. Council, my name is Marcia, and I am a Ralla resident and community member. I am speaking today, like many people in our community, we're very much looking forward to the completion and the opening of our Ralla Animal Shelter. Like many people, we understand that there is going to be some transition from the old shelter environment into the new shelter environment, and that's the reason why I'm speaking today. I'm speaking on behalf of a, a local organization called the Ralla Animal Alliance. This is a nonprofit group that is comprised of professionals in the animal sheltering and care environment, so that includes individuals who work with rescue, who work with shelter medicine, who work with transport and transportation. So this is a very diverse group with a diverse set of experience. We realize that, like anything that we talk about in these meetings, the community is limited by what resources we have. And so one of the things that the Ralla Animal Alliance can bring to the table is our knowledge as well as our commitment to the mission of filling any gaps that may be occurring in that shelter medicine and shelter care, as well as networking. And I'll elaborate a little bit more on that in just a minute. Currently, when an animal comes into the Ralla Animal Shelter, the basic vaccinations that they're provided with is a rabies vaccination, which is great, that's part of our ordinance, that's part of what keeps our, our community safe. But in larger communities, in the shelter environment, there is a whole protocol that's involved with that shelter intake, and that includes vaccinations for all of the core vaccinations that is appropriate for age and species. So cats and dogs have different intake vaccination protocol. There's also an emphasis on spay and neutering. Obviously, we all know this, that if we can contribute to the reduction of the pet population, it makes our jobs easier in the long run, so, but like anything, that requires resources. We also have the need in our community for, you know, we would like to be an open admission shelter, but the reality of that is, is we are limited in our space. So one of the things that our group has worked elaborately on is working on networking, as well as foster care programs and protocol. So what those programs can do is really provide an alternative when there is space limited in the shelter. We're planning on hosting some upcoming foster programs so that we can get the community involved and trained on proper protocol for that. And we're also going to be focusing on microchipping, which allows, you know, our Ralla Animal Shelter to reunite animals that are owned more quickly if they have some kind of identification. We will be hosting a low-cost microchip clinic coming up on July 19th, and this will allow up to 100 animals in our community to be microchipped at a low cost of $15. The proceeds from this will allow us to provide vaccinations for up to 50 of our Ralla Animal Shelters. So this is a wonderful partnership and a collaboration that we would love to have future conversations with, with the city in order to, to continue advocating for our animals in our community. Real quick, a little bit about my background and why I am so strongly advocating for this group and what they bring to the table. I spent over 20 years in the nonprofit sector. I spent over 11 years specifically at Colorado's largest animal shelter, public animal shelter. And I can tell you firsthand that a new building is going to be a wonderful asset to our community. But there's also another component that as we grow as a community, that there is a huge opportunity for us to implement really solid animal intake, veterinary protocol, and, and other programs that can just enhance our community, as well as the lives of our companion animals. When I first started in animal welfare, I worked at a shelter that had an intake of over 30,000 animals. And I know, thankfully, we don't have that kind of a volume here, but I can tell you when I started, 30,000, our live release rate was barely at 70%. And for cats, it was particularly poor at 39%. Through the community support, through professional input, through a collaboration with the city, I understand city partnerships and those budgets are important, we were able to, through donations and collaboration, build onsite veterinary care services. So we were able to provide all of that veterinary vaccination, spay and neuter upon intake. When I left 11 years later, our intake was down to 18,000 per year, and our live release rate was in the 90s. So I can provide that testimony that when we have this opportunity to be thinking about building these programs now and building on these collaborations of what the community volunteers have to offer, we're, we're headed in a great direction. So I will just close with that, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What is your name?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Marcia Wayman.
Marcia. Couple questions.
Yes.
The alliance consists of a handful of people or different organizations, or what is the Ralla Animal Alliance?
Both of those. So we have local representatives here who, within our own relationships, have an elaborate connection, networking, other rescues, other organizations, other veterinarians, there's a whole collaboration there.
Okay. So I, I find your presentation interesting from a couple perspectives. You know, we're going to spend, I'm going to say 1.5 million dollars, give or take, on the, the new animal shelter, and from day one, that's been envisioned to be substantially different than what we have now, for a lot of reasons. But the whole idea was to have an environment and a system to encourage much of what you're saying, including adoptions and things like that. There's space in that particular building for events, I'm going to loosely say, birthday parties and things like that, for kids to help support, educate, help support placement of animals and all of those things. So when we started this a couple of years back, the decision was to have citizen input in the form of committees. It was a committee formed originally to help with the fundraising, and that's been up and running for some period of time. When the place is built, it would envision that a different committee, and what I would say, an advisory board would be created, to help the city do exactly what it is that you're talking about. So stay tuned.
Wonderful. We look forward to...
There's a job for you.
Yeah, we look forward to helping, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marcia.
Any questions for Marcia?
Yes, it is. I do have some flyers here too, that I will leave.
Do you have a time and a location on the microchipping event?
Absolutely. I'm sorry, who asked the question? Yes, it's going to be July 19th. It is from 10 till 2, and it's going to be located at the Family Center in Ralla, Missouri, on 72.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to speak to city council? Yes.
Can you read my address? 36 South Mary Lane. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristen Williams. We live in Ralla on South Mary Lane. We recently, actually about a month and a half ago, had an issue with the city sewer main that backed up into our basement, flooded and took out everything in our finished basement, that's our living quarters. We called multiple plumbers during the night when it happened on May 7th, and nobody could come that night, so we ended up calling RNU. They came. It wasn't in my yard issue, so we called the police department. They brought the Public Works over. They got there after 12, stayed over an hour, then the water that was six inches started Either way, six inches of my neighbor's waste was in my basement. I brought letters last week, I'm not sure if they were passed out to, to you all? Okay, so I'm really not going to go into the whole backstory of it, that was the letter. Since then, we have received our bills from Tricat, who was given permission and authorization to go ahead with the mitigation process by Eric Shipe, Shripe, whatever the superintendent's name is. We're at $52,000 for a mistake of wording by him. The insurance has since found...
Ms., can you just, with the shuffling, I missed something.
Oh, sorry.
The 52,000, pick up from that point.
Okay, so that's the bills that we've received so far. That's not my personal property, that's just the mitigation of everything, and then the rebuilding of the, the basement, not my personal property, that's extra, I have that figured too. I have the pictures, and I'm concerned with how the insurance got no neglect on the city part. I asked for the reports, they said that they're under, they've done what they're supposed to as far as inspection of the lines every few years, every three years, I think it was. It was done in 2023, and I have pictures, they're not great quality. I tried to get better quality, but the, the link that Darren sent me expired, so those are available. Problem is, the root wad in 2023 is the same root wad that is there in 2025. When I asked about it, why it wasn't removed, it wasn't on the main, it was on the lateral. I asked Mr. Butts, so is that on my neighbor? Should I go, should I hand my neighbor this bill? They're not sure if the house was vacant or occupied. Takes a knock on the door, that's all you have to do. 2025, they're still not sure if they've been notified of this issue. The root is still in the same spot, still there. So, Pace, Mr. Pace is our...
For the record, my plumbing company was the contractor responding to the call.
He was called four times in one month for the same issue, for water backing up. The last time was the worst, but we've had so much rain, so much everything, so that was an issue, I thought. I'm not sure if he contacted the city about coming. I think the third time that they came out, they were looking into contacting the city, but also, my neighbors on the sides of the street, the same side, they're constantly having plumbers come. This should not be an issue. It should have been addressed in 2023 and in 2025. I don't think that neglect didn't happen. We were told, "Yes, go ahead." Eric came in, stood in my basement and said, "Yes." Then I was told he doesn't have authorization to do that. Then don't give him a superintendent job. Don't send him to assess the situation and tell him to make a call, and then not back up what he said. I have a $52,000 bill because...
I actually understand who said what. Who was in your basement and said what?
Eric Shive, Shive, the superintendent of Public Works.
Okay. And he said what?
That the city was at fault to go ahead with mitigation, because TRICAT had come to remove the water. Because at that point, that's when we found out it was actual sewage, not rainwater, it was sewage. There was feces in my basement. So, we had that, but at that time, it had been 12 hours, so it had already gone up the wall. And I said, "Do not do anything until we get the city over here." I said, "They already said at 7:30 in the morning, 'Yes, it's on us.'" The guy who removed the wad, "It's on us, it's 76, 70 something feet up the road. It's on us." So, then, we called, and I said, "Do not have them do one thing. I can have my dad come over and take doors down for not $52,000." He came over, stood down there, and said, "Yes, it is on us. Stephanie's out of town, she'll be back on Monday. Have them start the mitigation, remove the drywall, do the doors, the trim. I have nothing left down there, nothing." So, we did that, turned everything in, and now it's denied. And I have these.
I don't know that we're in a position to really respond to you in a way that you probably want us to respond because of potential legal aspects. So, I think the best thing I could say is, first of all, very sorry for what has incurred, we understand.
I just don't understand, like at my job, if I make a mistake like that, my company has insurance to protect me for...
I don't know what the employee said.
Well, he's told, he's told that neighbor, he's told it all over town, my hairdresser, they knew.
Maybe he did, maybe he didn't. I don't know what he said or didn't say, and I don't know what he was qualified to say or...
Apparently, nothing.
So, I think the best we can say for this particular setting is, the city council is going to have to speak in closed session, because this is probably going to have legal implications.
It does, I've already gotten a lawyer.
One way or another. So, we'll put that on the schedule for the next meeting?
It's on tonight.
Oh, it's on tonight, okay.
I just...
We're going to talk about it.
It's just frustrating. And you, when you drove by to assess the situation, I was home, because I followed you back to my work. You could have come in and saw...
Who's you?
He said that you drove by, he said that...
I don't know you from the man on the moon. I didn't drive by your place.
Oh, John Butts said that you did.
I give you the, you asked for the address on South Murray.
Oh, okay. I went through the neighborhood, yeah. I wasn't knowledgeable enough to come in and say anything.
Yeah, so I hope my neighborhood was nice enough for you.
Anyone else would like to speak to city council?
Jonathan Gimble at 601 Southview. So, I just wanted to mention that this past Saturday was our 50th annual pride here in Rolla. It's bigger than ever. We estimate about 600 people. I wanted to thank everybody in the city administration who helped us make it a successful event, starting with the Parks Department, and Stan and a couple of other guys from Parks stood in the pouring rain with me on Friday afternoon to test out a big fan, and I appreciate that. And also, Public Works and the police and everybody else that helped make a success. There were no protests or incidents, just people having a good time being themselves here in our community. So, again, just wanted to thank you for allowing us to put on a great event. Thanks.
Thanks.
Jonathan, what do you think attendance was?
About 600.
Okay, thank you.
We counted 470 at 5:15, and the show went on until like 8:30, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens would like to speak?
So, coming up here in a couple Saturdays, I'm doing another funeral for another overdose victim. So, those always suck. It's terrible, especially when the family loses a child. So, I don't know, I've been coming up here before some of y'all was even on the board here, or council, or whatever you call it. Every other Monday, and we talk, we spend hours talking about the mission, or fluoride, or the pride events, or signs in yards, and how often do we ever talk about the drug problem? I think it's something that needs to be addressed. The numbers are decreasing, but still, one is too many. So, that's really all I got. And call off the Rain Mayor, so, thanks.
Anyone else like to speak to city council? Mayor of city council comments? We have one on the agenda, and that is to consider a resolution in support of Ozark Actors Theater, their application for a T-Mobile grant. Are there any questions on the resolution, the wording of it, the need for it, the support of it?
I would just add that we're familiar with T-Mobile, who's been doing a placemaking grant for a long time. It's very, very competitive, very hard to get these grants. So, I think Ozark Actors Theater, who is really working hard to get a real known presence on Pine Street, did receive ARPA funding through their community facilities to do a lot of that work. We wish them all the best, but this is a challenging foundation grant to obtain. They do ask for a letter of support from the community.
I guess I just want to clarify that, I mean, our resolution is just bringing public acknowledgement to it, not having anything to do, like, it's not needed for the grant.
Doesn't go through us, does not support it by us.
That's what I imagined with the resolution.
Moral support.
I wanted to be sure.
Can we read it by just title, or do you have to read it?
I can, but I need to, in full disclosure, I'm on the Missouri Arts Council, and I'm actually on the panel, the judges, theater groups, and this was a group that we, that I judged and that we did award funding to. That's not a conflict, but I just want to make that known.
Can you read the resolution by title?
It's theoretically possible.
A resolution of the city council of Rolla, Missouri, in support of the Ozark Actors Theater, Pine Street Studio, Placemaking Project.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Any other council comments? Comments for the good of the order, the next meeting is July 7th, Monday night.
Is that correct, man?
It is.
I did have a couple, real quick.
Yes.
Mayor, or, go ahead, Jeff. Chief, go ahead.
Okay. Darren's waiting, too, we're piling up back here. We talked a little bit about the Parks. I want to talk about the Parks, talk about Floyd a little bit. All good stuff. So, we did have the benefit Saturday, it was an awesome turnout, ended up being a really good event. Friday night, we had about two inches of rain, it seemed to hover right over the ballpark, so Saturday morning, they were a disaster. I just want to tell you how awesome the Parks Department we have. The crews that were out there did everything in their power they could to get at least one field so we could use it. We had 11 teams, we had a pretty good tournament that day. Floyd himself was out there several times to make sure everything was going well. We played 11 teams, tournament, three-game guarantee. The last team, I think, got done about 3:00 AM. It was a spirit drive, there was only a couple grouchy people, it was really, really good. The turnout was phenomenal. We had a bunch of firefighters, police officers, and EMS workers there, so it was a pretty hostile community there. The Parks Department put up with us. I just want to publicly thank the Parks Department for all they did to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Floyd.
And I apologize for getting in your packet, but I do want to let everybody know, the Freedom Parade, this will be the second annual Freedom Parade, it'll be on 4th of July, starts at 10:00 AM. Normal parade route goes up Pine Street, exits on 11th, so hopefully, everybody come out for that.
Any other comments for the good of the order?
I just want to add a couple more. Number one, happy birthday to the Army. That was on Saturday, that was their 250th birthday, the United States Army. Not just because we have Fort Littlerwood right next to us, but always want to say thank you to our veterans and our active duty and everything they do for us every day. 250 years, that's huge. And then also, I was going to mention the parade, but Darren did a great job on it. I was also going to mention the Lions Carnival coming up, July 2nd through the 5th. They always do an incredible job raising money out there and things for our community in that park. Something new they're going to do this year, they've always done fireworks, which will be on the 4th and the 5th this year, but on the 3rd, they're going to do a drone show, kind of fireworks as a drone show, which will be really cool. I don't think this has been done here before, so I just want to throw that out there.
Kevin, do you by chance know what days the parks, or the park closes?
I would tell you, it'll be on their site. Usually, they close four or five days ahead to get ready for it, but I'd tell you wrong if I told you the exact date, Nathan. If you go to their Facebook page, it'll be out there.
Speaking of Facebook, not that I do Facebook, or any social media for that matter, but for those of you who might have seen it, I'm sure RD was all over the story about a rumor that the city of Rolla is going after Kansas City Chiefs Stadium. Needless to say, needless to say, it's not true.
It was really well written, whoever put it together did a great job with it.
We've had a lot of calls and emails asking.
Oh, my gosh.
If there's no more comments for the good of the order, is there a motion to go into closed session, talk about a legal issue, contract negotiations, and personnel?
Chairman will make the motion to go into closed session.
Honorable second.
Roll call vote?
Turbin?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Pond?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Jackson?